We'll call the meeting to order. If you'd call the roll, please, Terry.
Sure. Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
And Ms. Naylor is absent right now.
So with the interest of time for people who are on here only for the grant, I figured we get this open and we could go forward with that. So we have a vote to recommend to the full school committee that had approved the expenditure of $16,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for FY21, growing literacy equity across Massachusetts, GLEAM, collaboration and preparation. Somebody want to, Mr. Superintendent, who's going to report on?
Laura and Nicole, do you want to just walk us through some specifics relative to grant?
On the elementary side of it, we were happy to be able to get Desi to let both the zone and public schools apply for this grant. Originally, that wasn't the case, and Mindy did some legwork behind the scenes to make that happen. So we're pleased to do that. Desi's really come up with some great supports for literacy learning across the state in the past couple of years. One is that CURE process that we talked about when we purchased our grade three to five curriculum. The other is the mass literacy site that really talks about early literacy and the things that we need to be doing that are evidence-based to really ensure that all of our students are learning to read. And they've come up with this GLEAM grant. And so we took the opportunity to go for the preparation grant, and the preparation grant, you could apply for it knowing that you might not apply for the subsequent grants. So when we applied for the preparation grant, we really weren't too clear as what the follow-up grants would look like. We were happy to get the full award of 8,000, both Nicole and I got the full award of 8,000. So what we're doing in the elementary department is we are using the grant to fund some professional texts to help us think about early literacy, the science of reading, and MTSS, really serving our students in a multi-tiered system of support, and calling focus groups with stakeholders, educators largely, and parents as well. Actually, meeting with parent villages and Campaign for Great Level of Reading to help us convene some parent groups around these topics, really thinking about what the needs are for our educators as they're grappling with shifting from a different approach to reading to an approach that we've been trying to implement the past couple of years. So we're pleased to use that grant in that way. We are not pursuing the further grants. We looked at it, and I can't speak for Nicole. We looked at it, Brian Dickey, and both myself and Brian Dickey, and talked with Stefania, and those grants don't fit our needs. They would require us to change our curriculums, and we're not in a place where we want to do that. We just made some really hefty purchases, and we've done a lot of legwork behind the scenes to get up to speed on the science of reading in the early grades. So we feel pretty confident with what we have. So we're going to use the preparation grant to really think about how we meet the needs of people in implementing those resources. Nicole?
Yeah, so, hi, everybody. Nice to see you this evening. Laura outlined, I think, the the basics of the planning grant here, and as she said, we were happy to be approved by Desi to apply separately so that, you know, the SPS can work on this grant and project related to K to five or K to eight, and we can focus on the secondary level. So we do, at this point, we do plan on applying for the subsequent grants. The deadline for that is in mid-May, so we'll use the current funding to support groups of staff, students possibly in some cases, and other stakeholders, administrators, teachers, parents and families, to come together to actually put together a larger proposal. The $8,000 that we have so far will go towards supporting stipends and materials for those meetings to really compensate people for their time and effort. We have made a lot of shifts in the last few years around our core curriculum in literacy. A lot of our schools have made curriculum changes over the last five years of the zone. So I think we'll focus more so in our subsequent grant proposals on the tier two and tier three instructions, since we have made some bigger shifts across tier one core instruction. We still have about a month to figure all of that out, so I'm not 100% clear on the, on all the details, but it's coming together, and we were very thankful to get this, this grant to support the planning process.
Thank you. Madam Pluck, would you please indicate that Mrs. Naylor did come in just as we started discussion, the discussion?
I will. Thank you.
Are there questions from committee members? Hearing none?
I do have, I have a question, Chris. Which, it seems like, I mean, obviously, we're appreciative of any amount of money that we get, but it seems like they're giving us a little bit of money for a lot that they're asking us to do ultimately. But to your point, I think, Laura, and let me know if I misunderstood it. The part that we got the grant for is something that we can definitely do because it aligns, but to do anything else beyond that for any additional funding from them would then mean that we would be in a place of compromise, or therefore needed to adjust a lot of things that we've already planned.
Yes, you're understanding that correctly. And actually, and moving forward, they would only fund 50% of what we would be seeking, and 50% at eight schools. So, I mean, for me to look at this after we've just spent all the money we've spent on a grade three to five curriculum, we already have a really solid intervention for tier two in place, and we're about three years in on a new curriculum in K to two. We were just starting to make some headway before COVID. It just didn't make sense to take that shift at this point in time. And I commend Nicole because this is a very demanding grant to implement moving forward, reading through all of the literature, whether she goes for the upcoming year or the following year, track one or track two. The demands are tremendous. They're not, it's not an easy grant to implement, so I commend them for taking it on, for sure.
So just so I understand, we are accepting 16,000, which is for phase one, for 8,000 for us and 8,000 for the zone. If the zone applies for the second part of it, how, does that come to the city and then we pass it on? So will, will we have to deal with this again in the future, or? I'm not sure how that works. I mean, can the zone apply independently?
We've brought all grants to the school committee, even the ones for the zone in the past. That's how we've been handling them. All new grants come to the school committee.
Okay, so if they, when they decide to go forward, then we'll just see that as another acceptance?
Whether that's a, whether that's appropriate or not, I'll defer to Melinda, but that's what we, that's what we've done in the past.
Okay. All right. I don't see any reason to break from past practice. It seems like a good practice. So if there's no more questions, is there a motion to recommend to the full school committee that we expend the $16,000 from Department of Elementary and Secondary School for FY21, for growing literacy equity across Massachusetts, collaboration, preparation?
I'll make that motion, Chris.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Terry, would you call the roll on that one?
Sure. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Ms. Naylor?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies. You're willing to stay and listen to our whole budget proposal. If you're, you're welcome, rather, but you don't have to. Thank you.
That sounds so tempting right now. And I, thank you very much. I just want to say to Latonia, I don't know if you know this, but Parent Villages is going to help us lift some of the parent work on our side of the planning grant, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thanks, Nicole.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is an informational item, an update on the budget. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Superintendent, who will probably passing the depon right to Pat, but I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, no, I'm gonna, you're right. I'm gonna pass this over to Pat, our budget expert. You know, he and our team have done a great job with this, with this budget, as, as always. But we have a balanced budget, a few key pieces. Or posing the SOA is 100% of it going out to the schools, as we have talked about in the past, which I think is a huge feature of the budget, for them to make decisions at the schoolhouse level as to how to best expend that extra, those extra dollars. Principals are ecstatic about that. Another big thing we did was we used a 9.3 million in carryover to help balance the budget. So again, we could put all the SOA into the schools. We'd have to use that to balance the budget. So those are two of the big key features, but I'd like Pat to take through it. I just wanted to congratulate Pat and the team for doing a great job. And each of our major department heads that have been working on this for months, balancing this, have done a great job. So I'm gonna turn it over to Pat.
So just before you start, Pat, just to update Peter and Latonia, I got a phone call from Jake Olivera that the House budget has decided to full, fully fund and at, instead of using one-seventh, using one-sixth, the student money. And they've also created another line item, which currently only has $40 million in it to try to address the enrollment. Almost all districts across the state, enrollment dipped on October 1 because of us all being either remote, fully remote, or hybrid, or, but anyway, enrollment did drop. So they're putting a line item in. Jake said they don't believe that that line item of 40 million is large enough, so he'll be looking to do an amendment. And asked if we could write a letter, and he knows that we're not going to have another full committee meeting before that work will be completed. So we're having, I'm having a letter drafted to address what Jake wants, supporting that they, number, thanking them for number one, funding the student opportunity money at the level they did, and encouraging them to increase the amount, the line item amount used to address the needs due to decreased enrollment. And because, considering I checked with Pat earlier, the amount needed, the effect on Springfield is 6.1 million, just Springfield. So clearly, 40 million won't address it, even though the majority of the shortfall will be in the in systems like Springfield, Gateway City, so, but, so the letter's going to be drafted. I'm going to sign it, and I'm going to send it. I'm going to ask that John Begley bring it to all of you. Any of you can sign. I would love it if you, if everybody signed on, and it's not a vote. You have the opportunity to either sign on the letter that I'm having drafted, and I'm going to sign or not. So we're not deliberating. You can just look at the letter and decide whether you want to sign on the letter with me as an individual. Sorry to interrupt your flow, but go ahead, Pat.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate that. That's a big thing for Springfield.
Yeah, a real big thing for Springfield. You know, it's over $6 million. If Jake can help us with that piece, that would be huge. And with our formula on the SOA, instead of the one-seventh going to the schools, we could easily increase that school amount. And again, our plan would be to give 100% of the SOA to the schools. So the increased amount would be easy for Pat to build into the school budgets, and I'll let Pat roll.
Excellent. Thank you. So we have, last time we came to you and we presented the preliminary budget, we had an $8.1 million deficit, so we're going to kind of walk you through what we did, how we balanced, and then what's included in the budget. So first, I have to just move this off my screen, sorry. We use the governor's budget to build our budget. The House of Representatives and the Senate, Ways and Means, hasn't come out yet, so we use the governor's budget as the best information available. The governor's budget did fund the first year of SOA. They funded it at one-seventh. And so as the, as Chris was just mentioning, or the superintendent, that it sounds like it's going to go to one-sixth, which would be additional dollars potentially if it makes it into the final budget. So what we do as a best practice is we asked all of our central office departments to submit 3% reductions, and in some cases we took them, and in some cases we didn't, but it's a best practice to always be looking at your budget and seeing if there's a better way to do things. My, my budget team went through and they reviewed the major accounts like fringe benefits, utilities, out-of-district tuition, to identify savings, and then we implemented those strategies, and so those savings that we found there as well as additional cost rate saving strategies. The major thing we did to balance the budget was we used $9.3 million in carryover. And the reason we did that is we wanted to fund SOA, and not only did we want to fund SOA, but the superintendent was adamant that even that, that this should be year two of SOA, and we should be funding twice as much as we were planning to fund the schools last year. So last year, when we asked the schools to do SOA, we were giving them $200 per pupil, and this year we did $400 per pupil. We used general fund carryover to make up that difference. So here is a big picture look at the budget. As you can see, Chapter 78 is going up $23 million. And the city's contribution is zero. We, we're planning to use the ESAR funds to plug in that part of the city's budget. The, you go down to, right before the total operating revenue, it says supplemental funding. You can see the 9.288 million, 9.3 million that we used. When you look at salaries, it's showing a 9.6% increase, but the reason it looks like that is because we're going off of the revised budget. So if you remember, we came back to you mid-year with a revised budget when the state finally passed their budget, they cut SOA. So we had to come back, and we had to make those adjustments in the budget accordingly. And so some of that was the SOA funds we cut, and some of that was the salary savings we ended up with because we were in the pandemic and we left some positions vacant. Supplies and services, that's mainly a net reduction because we moved the computer leases over to ESAR funds. The empowerment zone, you can see, is going up 8.1%. That's based on our contract and our formula with the empowerment zone. Health insurance, 5.5%. Retirement, 8.3%. And other benefits, or I'm sorry, retirement, 10.1%, other benefits, 8.3%. Utilities is showing a 25.8% increase, but that's mainly because of our revised budget, because we had spent significantly less in utilities last year than we did in prior years, because during the pandemic, we weren't in the buildings, so we weren't doing, using the heat or the amount of electricity or even the water that you would normally use when the buildings are occupied. Out-of-district tuition, Dr. Morris and her team put in a lot of work, and they were able to reduce the out-of-district tuition budget by going through and making sure that we had everything accurate. So that was a big savings there. You can see 14.8%, and that was very helpful.
Mr. Ch, can I ask a question, Mr. Collins? Pat, with respect to the line item for other benefits, which is going up 8.3%, what, can you just, what are other benefits?
Unemployment, Medicare, and workers' comp. We had a, workers' comp has continued to increase significantly on a regular basis. I think, I haven't looked at our unemployment trends, but I think they're trending up because of COVID as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And then charter school tuition's going up $8.4 million, or a 12% increase. So I'll just point out to you that between the empowerment zone at 4.5 and the charter tuition at 8.4, that's $13 million out of the 23 million that we're not really balancing for when we're balancing the budget of the $23 million increase. So with that, you come down, and we have no longer have an anticipated budget gap. We're looking at a $501 million general fund budget. So this shows it by the different chiefs, the different departments. Business and finance going up 3.8%. That's heavy in the utilities and the benefits. Communications, pretty average. Curriculum and instruction, we had a few changes there based on some curriculum. Human resources, that's a pretty average increase. IT looks like it's going down, but that's because we moved computer leases to a different funding source. IT is not being cut. Parent and community engagement's pretty flat. Special education looks like it's going down, but that's that out-of-district tuition that we spoke about earlier. Student services is pretty flat. All of our money is going into school operations, as you can see. School operations are where all the money that goes to our schools. So they're getting a $20 million increase out of this at the end of the day. It's a 6.6% increase, and it's 20, 20.4 million, 20.5 million. Superintendent's pretty flat, and the school committee's pretty flat.
So Pat, just on the, I'm sorry, on the issue of the, the school operations budget, that 20 million that primarily goes to, is that personnel expenditures?
You'll see on a slide that I'm going to show you in a minute, it's, it's, it's heavy in personnel, but we also give the schools a lot of discretionary funds that they can do what they want with. And I'll go through the different categories.
Thank you.
Okay. This is showing you the FTE changes. So business operations went up too. Those are a couple positions in the Food Service Department coming in-house from Sedexo. Communications is flat. Curriculum instructions is flat. HR has an extra FTE. IT has an extra couple FTEs. Parent and community engagements, flat. Special education's flat, pretty flat. Student services went down one. I believe that position moved to special ed, but I can go through the specifics in a minute. School committees, flat. School operations has a significant increase in staff. That's where all of, we put all of our money, so that's where the increase in staff is coming from, and that's one of the things you were asking about, Peter. So here, what are we doing in the budget? Where, there's, we do a staffing allocation, right? So we assign based on how many students are in schools. You know, a principal, how many assistant principals, how many teachers, how many ESOL teachers, SPED teachers, you know, all the positions in a school, we allocate them based on students. We also allocate all of these discretionary funds, and I call them discretionary, but basically, we put them into buckets, and then we allow the schools to build their own budgets around this. So $8.7 million in intervention funds. We give every school $500 per student to build intervention plans for their kids, and that can be hiring academic intervention teachers, that can be doing tutoring, anything that can, counseling, social, emotional, anything that falls into those categories. The Student Opportunity Act funds, this is the new line item that we're putting in here, 6.7, 6.8 million. We're giving $400 per student. So in last year's budget, we had $200 per student, and in our mind, this is year two, so we went, wanted to increase to $400 per student that we're doing in Student Opportunity Act funds. All of our schools get Title I funds. They're based on how many economically disadvantaged kids they have. That's 5.15 million. Supplies, every school gets $145 per student to buy supplies like copy paper and pencils and things of that nature. Extended learning time allocations, that 1.7 million, that's so schools can build their own summer school, school vacation, night school, or before-after-school programming. Books, all the schools get $40 per student. We, we've historically bought the textbooks for the school, but this is like a replacement fund in case somebody loses a book or they, they need to replace something for that reason. Can also go towards library books and things of that nature. MCAS tutoring, $54 per student solely so that schools can do MCAS tutoring and get their kids ready for MCAS. Lunch coverage, this, you know, we give this money to the schools so that they can cover their lunches. However, a lot of schools have been creative and figured out ways to cover their lunches, and then they use this money for other areas. They move it into one of the other categories. Academic allocation, so, you know, this is summarized here, but we give the schools different chunks of money, you know, to deliver their art curriculum, music curriculum, health curriculum, PE curriculum. Not only can they use this money, they can use money in intervention funds or Student Opportunity Act funds to deliver that as well. But this is just simply dedicated to that. The schools get $928 for every 75 students for technology, and most of our schools already have all the technology they need. This is just, if they want to upgrade a couple smart boards or add a few new projectors in some places where they didn't have them before. And then the home visit project, $3,000 per elementary schools in the budget. What else did we put in the budget? We expanded preschool again, so you'll be happy to know that we are now universal full-day pre-K for all four-year-olds. So any four-year-old in the city of Springfield that wants to go to preschool full day, no cost, we're able to provide it. Any three-year-olds, we're going to be providing a half-day preschool. So any three-year-old in the city who wants to go to preschool, it's free, and we will put them in one of our schools. We're also adding four new full-day classes between Brightwood and Lincoln in the new building. And what's exciting about that is Bright is, um, actually, that says Brightwood's a new boundary school, but it's actually Lincoln's the new boundary school. Lincoln never had preschool. And Brightwood will be on years. We added three new full-day autism, preschool autism classes. So those are more full-day opportunities for some of our special ed children that could use the, use the amount of time in school. And then we're also going to be piloting full-day opportunities for three-year-olds as well, with the hope of expanding into full-day pre-K for three-year-olds.
Pat, could you explain the Brightwood again, because you faded away there for a minute?
Sure. So we added four new full-day preschool classes between Brightwood and Lincoln. And on this slide, it says Brightwood is, is a new boundary school for pre-K. It's actually incorrect. Lincoln's the new boundary school for pre-K. This is, this will be year two of Brightwood having preschool classes. So we were able to add Brightwood a couple of years ago. But we're expanding it there. We're also going to be expanding wraparound services. Our City Connects program, it'll now be in all of our schools, so it wasn't in two of our high schools before, so they were the last two schools left, non, non-empowerment zone schools, and we'll be able to add it there. And now every school in Springfield Public Schools will have wraparound services for kids. Any questions on the high-level presentation?
I have a question, Chris. So can you go back just a second? So with the expansion wraparound services, what does that fall under? Which chief would that fall under?
That is under Dr. Morris. Special education. It was under Dr. Johnson last year.
Okay, so the City Connects are under, under special education?
Yes.
And then what, what are the counselors under? What would that, what's the name of their?
Student services.
Student services. Okay, can you go back just a few slides for me, please?
Yep. So student services here is basically the central office-controlled part of student services, right? And all the counselors are in school operations because they're actually assigned to the schools.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. That's helpful.
Because that line would look a little low to you, didn't it?
Right. I'm like, oh. The way the mental health situation is going right now. Okay, so that, that is, that is helpful. So now, I know that one of the things I asked about as a priority was for us to have increased supports around mental health, because that is definitely an issue, and I know that we do have, and when I say increase, I'm not just saying monetarily, right? I'm thinking about leveraging relationships. Like, I know some of the schools have people like Gandara and stuff like that, that come into the schools and service our kids. Where, where would that be on, where would we see the funding to support that kind of stuff at?
Excellent question. So the City Connects program that we're adding at the two high schools, that's what they do. They connect those students with the Gandara and the BHNs and the different counselors that are out in the community, as well as if the brand-new line item here, the $6.7 million Student Opportunity Act, we're giving the schools $400 per student, and that's one of the items that schools can build a plan on based on the needs of that school. And some schools have heavier needs than other schools as well, and the principals and chief school officers are in the process of building those plans as we speak.
Okay, so for example, if a school wanted to add another coun, uh, excuse me, another counselor, then they'd be able to do that from those funds?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, that way, each individual school gets to look at their own needs, and we don't mandate things that may not meet the individual schools.
One, one school may want an adjustment counselor, another school may want a contracted BHN, right? You know, it kind of, it kind of allows certain levels of flexibility to do things like that.
Thank you.
And that's over and above their full counseling allocation. And that's over and above their full counseling allocation and their full City Connects allocation, so.
Now, is City Connects now completely on the city budget? There's no more, cause we had grants for a while.
We still have some grants, Chris.
We do. I thought we accepted.
We have a million with Mass Mutual. And we're putting in for an extension with Mass Mutual. We haven't heard firmly, but we think it sounds good. Um, so, um, but we do, we're waiting final word on that. So we had, we had a million, uh, we're expecting at least five hundred thousand more this year.
Thank you.
They love the program and they love the outcomes tied to the program. So, um, they've been very supportive.
Any other questions that I could answer?
You know, Pat sent out the detail to all of us for, behind each department. If you have a question on it right now, you can ask it right now. If you, if you're reviewing it again later and you think of one. Um, you can call Pat directly, but behind each one of those, we got a huge detail for each one of them. Um, so if anything pops out to you that's not coming to your, directly to your mind right at the moment. Um, give them a call and get the answer, uh, that you need.
Thank you. I just wanna say, um, I'm really excited about the preschools, um, expanding. Even though I know some of the folks in the community that make money off of those slots are not as happy. But I do think that is so important for our kids to have access to full daycare and for parents not to have to worry about paying. A thousand dollars a month. Sometimes I remember what it was like when my kids were in preschool and it was very expensive. So I, I'm really, really excited about that. And I'm so happy because as y'all know, it was something that was really important to me. And so, uh, to see it coming into fruition, it really is such a great thing. And it will help our kids tremendously as far as we, us continuing to support them moving forward and, and getting them the services they need. Third, when they're three or four years old and moving them forward, like that's gonna be huge. So, yeah.
Certainly, every study.
Thanks for giving me that good news. I, I appreciate it for that good news.
Certainly, every study stand, you know, supports that. And we've been chipping away at it, but every study says kids who have the preschool experience are much more successful in school.
So, and the data in Springfield showed how well the kids did coming out of our preschool programs. And then specifically when we went to full day, how mu-, well, how much of a difference that made. And the attendance went up dramatically, needless to say, when it went to full day. Because that two-and-a-half-hour program was a problem for families from a daycare standpoint, but it was also a problem with attendance. And, uh, when you look at the data of our kids entering kindergarten and how far behind when they don't have a quality program. But full-day pre-K is really backed by all research and we're moving towards that. And with highly qualifying teachers, so we're gonna provide the care for families, but also. A high-quality academic program that sometimes centers couldn't provide. It's gonna make a big difference for our kids. The early intervention is critical.
So, Dan, um, I remember asking you about this, and I know because of COVID right now, we don't have it yet in place. But will we be anticipating going back to having some early, um, or before-school type of programming? After schools and after-school programming?
Yes, yes, we will. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Trying to work through all the COVID pieces now. But what I anticipate happening down the road is some vendors looking at opportunities. To do a wraparound on our, even our full-day pre-K. For w- working families to make it even better. So, uh, we're gonna work hard on that to help families out.
I have one last question. Um, it's about our, over the summer, um, summer learning loss, right? Um, I know that, I know we're planning for kids to do summer school and stuff like that. Do we yet know what that's gonna look like for us, um, as far as? How, the percentage of kids and maybe even costs that we'll incur for that?
Yes, uh, we're, we're looking at it. We don't have specifics for you. Uh, uh, working with DASI, uh, they strongly suggested, and we are absolutely gonna do this. We're gonna, um, offer a live and a remote option for parents. So kids can get that summer school. We're gonna take some of our federal funds, invest heavily in it because of the learning loss. So that everyone can get a summer school option and, and have the program available at all the schools. So we're constructing the program now with some federal funding. We'll have support for the program. But we're gonna have a live and a remote option for our families.
Thank you.
So, not that the children would like it, but if, if they happen to go on vacation, they can take their laptop. And still do the two-and-a-half-hour summer school, even while they're on vacation. Um, that's a good thing.
Yeah, no, I think this remote option's a big deal. Cause I think if we only offered the live option, we wouldn't get everyone who really needs it. So I, I do think this remote, and again, for the, for the parents who say, no, no, they really need to get back in live. That's great too. We'll have that option. But I think being able to meet both of those needs is absolutely huge. So we can provide the kind of coverage we're gonna need, cause there, you know, there's some learning loss that's occurred here. And we wanna address it right away. Um, so we're, we're gonna really give, uh, the schools a big boost with our federal funds. To support that effort and, uh, really try to serve everyone who possibly needs it. We'll get you more specifics as we develop it. We're gonna have a robust program.
Just back on what Latonia was saying about preschool, um, there's a certain psychology. When it's full day. Every day in a school building, the parents treat it more like a school. When it's the half-day program, it's, oh, yeah, yeah, that fun thing they go to, that babysitting. Uh, and I think attendance is, attendance and, and participation really improves with it being full day.
Half-day preschool attendance has just been such a problem for us over the years. But, I mean, we were getting quality instruction during that two-and-a-half hours. So sometimes our kids in the half-day program actually have better outcomes than some of the private full-day preschools. Cause of the quality, um, curriculum, the quality instruction. But the attendance over the years has been such a struggle. And so we looked at our full-day attendance already. It's been a lot better. And we're, we're thinking we'll build on that. So I think there's a lot of truth to that. And again, I think we can put the wraparounds in place as well, put all the appropriate early intervention programs in place. And those outcomes of our kids entering kindergarten, which have been so, such a struggle. You know, we're gonna be able to change those drastically.
Are there any additional questions? Uh, no question but comment, uh, all of you and everybody else who's not on this with us, thank you for that. I mean, that's a lot of yeoman's work to get to this point. And I know you go through it every year, but we should be thanking you every year. This is difficult work at best. And you have kept the children at the center of your work, which is what we all hope for. So, congratulations.
I just wanted to add, Latonia, also that, um, though we know that there's definitely academic loss with our babies. Uh, many of the principals have been sharing with us CSOs around providing some sort of social, emotional supports during the summer as well. In addition to that academic piece, because we know that this is definitely what they need. And what that looks like is gonna be different by school, but, um, hopefully we'll be able to have some information on that as well.
Thank you.
DASI was looking at it, they purposely, uh, will have the, the federal funds to support that kind of work. So we're, we're gonna put that in. But great point, Garcia, not just the academic learning loss, the social, emotional pieces that will build them.
Are there any additional questions? And once again, feel free, if, if you're going through that detail again later on, uh, to give the, the Pat's office a call if you've got any additional questions. If there aren't any more questions and none of the muted people wish to speak, then a motion to adjourn is in order.
Don't move.
Second.
Harry, would you call the role?
Sure. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
And Ms. Naylor.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everyone. Our budget team was just tremendous, but so were all our department heads. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Take care, everyone. Good to see you.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.